There you go. Okay, so tried for a year to get this mic system and my last meeting I've got it. So whoop whoop accomplishments. Okay, so at this time it's 11:00 a.m. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's November 28th, 2023, and this is an airport workshop that we had asked for. I'm going to, if you're willing and able, we're going to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today and thank you for the blessings. Thank you for our health, our prosperity, and our love for the United States of America. I pray for Israel at this time and the Gaza Strip, that you can protect those people during these horrific times. Lord, please open all our minds and that we can absorb what is presented today and make good, sound decisions. Thank you for all that you do for us and thank you for forgiving our sins. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would call roll call?
Yes ma'am. This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is 28th day of November, 2023. In attendance are Chair Ruthie Schleba, First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Conard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard and County Attorney Denise Saydime Line.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a workshop for the airport projects progress update. And at this time Todd Reagan, Reagan, excuse me, Aviation Project Manager. Mr. Howard, if you can start this workshop, please.
Yes, Todd, if you could please start your presentation.
Okay. Good morning Chair.
Oh hello Todd, I didn't see you there.
Today we're going to talk about three things, Crystal River Airport Runway Extension, Inverness Airport Business Park, and the financial analysis and business planning study. I'd like to first start off with the Crystal River Runway Extension and like to introduce Consultants ESA. First one is Douglas DeCarlo.
Welcome.
Good morning, Doug DeCarlo with ESA Airports. I'm one of the managers on the project and following me will be Julie Sullivan, one of our directors of the firm and also a manager of the project. What I'd like to do today is give you a quick overview of the EA project to extend the primary runway or the main runway at Crystal River Tom Davis Field. And this will be a pretty high level overview. Here's our agenda. We want to talk about what the project is, just to remind or familiarize those that aren't aware of what the project entails. But really the meat of the presentation is talk about the overall NEPA, or National Environmental Policy Act overview, what that entails, why we're doing it, and the different steps that will be taken over the next year to get through that. And then at the end we'll have a schedule to kind of show you that process and how it maps out over, again, the next year. This environmental assessment's a little different than some typically. There's one project that's evaluated as part of an environmental assessment. In this case, there are two that are going at the same time. So as Julie may allude to a little bit later, the FAA will not look at two projects independently if they're going all at the same time. So they're being looked at simultaneously. The two main elements are the runway extension, that's runway 927, the east-west runway, the paved runway at the airport. It will be extended 600, it's being proposed to be extended 645 feet to the east along with taxiway Alpha, which is the parallel taxiway to provide access to both ends and the middle portions of the runway. This project was, it's been talked about for many, many years. Captain Davis certainly was a project near and dear to him and I worked with him on this years ago in previous master plans. But your most recent master plan for this airport was finished in 2017. It included this runway extension project and some refinements based on the issues at that time. So the project as it stands today, as we go into the environmental assessment, is based on what's on your current airport layout plan drawing from 2017, which was actually approved by the FAA a little later in 2019. So again, it's to extend the runway 645 feet to the east. I'll show you on the diagram here in a second. For an overall length just over 5,000 feet at 5,200. And this is to provide additional capability for the larger turboprops and business jets that are using the airport today. So as part of that runway extension, which I'll show you in a minute, there's, it will impact North Golf Course Drive, which goes around the east end of the runway. And then there's some other connected actions, all of which will be identified or studied in the environmental assessment related to how it impacts different things and features on the airfield, whether it be stormwater or even adjacent lands and trees and those sort of things. The second component you see there, the study that's going on, as I said, simultaneous, is the wildlife hazard management. The airport's currently wrapping up a wildlife hazard management assessment, primarily due to the issues or concerns that both FAA, FDOT, and certainly the county have had related to a number of the wetlands, both on the north and south sides of the existing runway today. They attract different birds, there's other issues related to just the wetlands themselves. So this is something that has been in the works to remove these, to avoid wildlife hazard impacts to the aircraft operating on the runway. So again, both of these are looked at simultaneously. What I'd like to do is just show you the diagram or the, this overview, kind of everything I just talked about. The areas, I'll kind of go backwards. The areas you see shaded there in blue on the north and south sides of the runway, and I don't know if I have a pointer, but it's not really going to matter. But the, those are the wetland areas that have been identified in the past. So as part of the environmental assessment, we'll look at reevaluating those wetland boundaries or limits because they do, can change or adjust over time. If you look on the right side of the drawing or the east side, if you will, because north is up on this figure, you'll see in blue, there's a blue hatching showing the runway extension to the east that I mentioned, 645 feet again, along with the parallel taxiway on the north side that also gets extended and connected to the end of the runway. There's also some green wetland areas or green hatching off the east of the runway extension, which are other wetlands that are associated with the overall projects. So this, I'm sorry, the one other item I want to point out is that, as I mentioned earlier, the project does, the proposed project would cross North Golf Course Lane, or Road, excuse me, Drive. And the way the master plan looked at it, the alternative at that time, was to extend Bicentennial Park Drive out to Golf Course Drive to provide access on the north side that would be cut off from the south side or if you were to come in from, you know, the venable side of the airfield. So that's the project in a nutshell. We'll certainly be happy to answer questions at the end, but I would like to turn it over to Julie, who will mention the overall NEPA process.
Lord, do you have any questions? Commissioner Finnegan.
Could you just point out, because I'm not sure and I can't see from here, the directions? Like where you said venable, I'm familiar with the road, I can't tell where it is on here. And then Golf Course Drive that you said you would have to relocate? And then you said connecting to?
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial, yeah, can you just kind of?
Yeah, Todd's going to help us walk through this since he's got the mouse.
Show him how to use a pointer. Thank you.
He should be able to see my mouse circling this.
Oh, very good. High tech. Even better.
Was it okay on this, just this TV?
Thank you Doug.
New to me too, I understand this is a newer system, right? It doesn't know normal. Okay. So here's, it's a bigger circle one, but here's the main runway. And it's going to be extended to the east here, that's the blue area I talked about. Right underneath that blue hatching or the runway extension is North Golf Course Lane that kind of wraps around the runway today and then comes up the east side of Bicentennial Park. Up here is the extension of Bicentennial Drive, Park Drive, out to North Golf Course that would provide the access once it's truncated from the project. So what I mentioned venable on the south side is currently today, access could come into that community, not directly off venable, but through some of the, well, actually I think North Golf Course does come over. Sorry, it's been a little lost, it's been over there and around. So since that will be truncated there, the master plan proposed extending Bicentennial. Did I clarify?
Yes.
Excuse me. All right.
Hello, good morning. Julie Sullivan with ESA Southeast Regional Director. And I'm working on the NEPA for this, the pre-NEPA at this point for this project. The one in the middle clicks?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, there we go. So this is just an overview of the NEPA process. In accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act, all federal action agencies have to follow this process to make sure that any project that's approved by them is proposed by them or is funded in any part by a federal agency has to go through this formal process. So NEPA requires that they consider any potential environmental impacts of projects. And it's triggered whenever the federal agency decides to take an action. In the case of this project, it would be the unconditional approval of the airport layout plan. There's conditional approvals in place until a project goes through this process and then it becomes unconditionally approved. This process is used to determine if there's any potential significant environmental effects and it must be completed before a project commences. This is a lot of stuff on the slide to basically show that there are three different categories of actions. The lowest level is if something is not expected to have any environmental impacts, it could qualify for a categorical exclusion. Then an environmental assessment is the next step up where there is potential for impacts and it has to be evaluated thoroughly. And then if there are significant impacts that either can't be mitigated or if there's a lot of heightened controversy, it could be elevated to an environmental impact statement. This project is an environmental assessment, it is that middle level. It can't be categorically excluded because there's a number of things that we have to evaluate. But we do feel that the impacts can be mitigated and would not warrant an EIS. So again, a lot of stuff that's hard to read on this slide, but this is really the process of the environmental assessment. It discloses the impacts through a variety of steps and the purpose is to determine if the impacts are going to be significant in each of these impact categories. There's about 16 different impact categories that have to be evaluated. It must be completed within one year of initiation by the lead agency. This is based on some guidance that came out for the Center for Environmental Quality, which oversees the NEPA processes for all federal agencies as a result of the 2020 changes to NEPA under that administration. So it basically set a 12-month timeframe to complete a NEPA process. But as agencies do, they see that time clock, but it doesn't say when they have to start the time clock. So what the FAA has done is come up with some guidance of things that they need to be completed before they officially start that one-year time period. And that's sort of where we are right now. So this is all of the items that we have to complete prior to even starting that 12-month clock. So you can see a lot of the things have been front-loaded, a lot of the planning elements. This includes things like a variety of the technical studies, identifying any lead or cooperating agencies, identify potential mitigation, doing screening of all the environmental categories and a whole laundry list of additional things. I'll stop here and just, if anyone has any questions at this point, yeah.
Sullivan, of those, I don't know, 12, how many items are there? How many have you completed?
I would say about half of them are completed and the rest are ongoing. So there's a number of things in here. So for instance, talking about the preliminary range of alternatives. We have identified a preliminary range of alternatives, but we haven't worked through those yet because there's still a number of technical studies that have to be conducted. So the FAA has required that we do a lot of the technical studies that previously would have been done during the EA process upfront because they know that there's potential issues with cultural resources out there. So we have to do a cultural resource assessment survey prior to starting the EA, which is underway. We have to do a biological assessment for listed species, that's underway. The wetland evaluation report, that's almost completed. The preliminary planning, which Doug was talking about earlier, looking at alternatives. One of the things I did want to note on that alternative for the road alignment, we understand that there are issues with different road alignments. So we're going to be looking at other road alignments. We're not saying that the, you can't predetermine that the road is going to be extended here and it's going to go here. We're going to look at a variety of different alternatives and then try to find the one that has the least impact from both an environmental standpoint, a community standpoint, you know, and a variety of other factors, including cultural resources, noise, lighting, those kind of things.
Okay, so you, there's actually 15.
Yeah.
And so you have seven and a half done. Have you identified the community and stakeholders affected?
We are working on collecting the list of stakeholders. We know who the agency stakeholders are, but we also know that there's community stakeholders as well. So we, you know, we are welcome, any input on who those stakeholders should be, any mailing list, any distribution list, if there's community groups or anything like that. Todd has provided us some that already have expressed an interest, but you know, that, the stakeholders are anybody in the community. I mean, it's a public document, so when this goes out for public comment, it's available to everybody. But if there are people that we need to do proactive engagement with, then certainly we would like to know that upfront. We want to be able to workshop and discuss, you know, these things and hear the input because we don't want to get to a point where we've predetermined something and, you know, there's a concern from the community or another stakeholder group.
Very good. Commissioners? Commissioner Conard?
So if we're roughly halfway through these before we can start the clock, what kind of a timeframe are we looking at to finish this up and get to that point of starting the clock? And the reason that I ask that is, as was mentioned to start with, this is a project's been talked about for years and years and years. The FAA has not been a tremendous partner in helping us get this project moving. And my concern is that thankfully the legislature stepped up and offered funding or appropriated funding for getting this project going. I don't want to see those funds from the legislature sitting on the shelf, waiting on more steps, more bureaucratic steps, should the FAA drag their feet on this project longer. So how soon can we get this done? How soon can we get the environmental assessment clock started?
Well, the long tent in the pole right now is the wildlife hazard assessment. It's a 12-month study and it's prescriptive. You can't like shorten that. So that timeframe, that's wrapping up at the end of this year with the report expected in January. So our preliminary schedule, which I'll pull up here in a minute, has us starting the EA clock in February. And we have an extremely cooperative FAA reviewer. She understands the timeframes and the pressure and she's been great to work with. We have a really collaborative engagement with her at this point. So we've been having routine meetings with her. Amy's our reviewer and she's providing input along the way. So we're not waiting until that clock starts. The idea is that when we get the clock started, a big chunk of this is just going to go straight into the document and hopefully that 12 months is shortened. I mean, there are certain timeframes, which you'll see in a minute, that there's a certain period of time it has to be available to the public and there's a certain period of time that the FAA has to review it. So there's some of those things that we can't shorten, but you know, we're doing everything on our end to get as much ready to go so that we hit the ground running in February. Yeah.
Excellent question. Any other questions?
Well, I'll put this up since that's the next slide anyway. So again, this is the preliminary schedule. We're completing all of the technical studies right now. Hopefully having most of those wrapped up by the end of the year or January at the latest. So that we're waiting on the final wildlife hazard assessment report. That does have to be completed because that is the justification for that wildlife. You can't predetermine that it's a wildlife impact. In other words, we have to have the results of the study. We know from the study and the results that have been coming in, we're pretty confident of where that's going to come. So both the FAA and our team have been sort of working in that direction, but we can't until we finalize that, make that statement. So that's really, you know, the start point and you'll see on this schedule, and I'm sure we can provide this in a larger format, of some of those timeframes that I talked about that are those prescriptive review periods at the FAA and for the public review.
Mr. Howard, could you have that printed for me and any other commissioners that want it?
Absolutely.
I can't possibly see that.
We'll take care of it.
I can't either.
If I can make one comment too, and I was very concerned about this project, the three-letter word that I don't like to hear, EIS. Because if you look at the data at the federal level, a typical EIS takes 7.7 years. And of course, there's no reason to go quicker and faster. So that was a real concern of me on this project. So that's, I think if we continue.
Well, I will say that same regulation that put the one-year timeframe did shorten the EIS to two. So again, that's all determined when the clock starts, but there's no indication from anyone at the FAA or anything that we've determined that this would go EIS. I can't, I can fairly confidently say this is not an EIS project.
Yeah, that's good news.
Very good. Commissioners?
If you think of anything else, you know, we're here, so thank you.
Thank you Ms. Sullivan. Okay, Todd?
All right. Any other further questions?
No.
Okay. Next, I'd like to talk about the Business Park at Inverness Airport. And I'd like to introduce Michael Cummings with AID and Kyle Hawley.
Good morning, Mike Cummings with American Infrastructure Development. I'm the Director of Construction Management. And Kyle Hawley's our engineer of record.
Kyle Hawley, engineer of record for the Business Park Development with AID.
Welcome.
Oh, sorry. Something, I did something. Which one? There's one blank. Yep, okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay.
Okay, so we're going to go through five things. Go through a little overview of the project, a little bit of background, project schedule, kind of where we're at now, current status, actually today we're paving our final lift of asphalt for the base bid. Project costs, some of the savings we've had on the project. And then a little bit of interesting kind of Jetsons high-tech stuff, advanced air mobility. So item one, go ahead Todd. So this is our base bid of the project. North is to the right in that drawing. So the highlighted blue area basically is our base bid industrial park, if you will. Essentially, this project includes, we started off with gopher tortoise relocation. So there was environmental component, a lot of clearing and grubbing, about 45 acres. We've installed new site drainage, we've done a lot of grading out there. There's a new lift station that's being installed. We've got water and sanitary sewer that are all tied to that lift station. And then our final lift of asphalt is actually going in. I was out there this morning. Things are going well with that. That should be wrapped up tomorrow, assuming our temperatures don't drop. So we'll see how that goes. So that's kind of the big picture broad brush. If you look at the top part of this drawing here, above the blue, if you will, that's the second portion of the industrial park, which abuts, there's a neighborhood to the west. If you want to go to the next slide Todd? So that's the darker blue area. Basically, there are different additives in the project. Additive one is the clearing and grubbing on that west side, which is the aeronautical area where we're going to, ultimately, there's going to be connection to the runway for the rest of the airfield.
For the directionally challenged, will you point to the west side with your clicker?
Okay, so west is going to be up, oh, I'm sorry, this, I'm not real good with these pointers. Let's see. There, oh, there it goes, kind of. Okay, so that's west.
Okay, very good.
So that's basically the residential area here. And then there's a screen wall that's going in. And this side has still got trees and hasn't been cleared or anything. So that's, the clearing and grubbing of that area is covered under the second alternate. The third alternate is the actual screen wall would go in and basically the west side associated work required as part of that screen wall, foundation, associated clearing and that type of stuff. Go to the next slide. And this is our final additive four. This is basically the mill and overway of the existing entrance road, which is shown there in purple. And that's essentially the entire project for the industrial park as part of that whole package. Next slide. Anticipated completion of the current phase that we're in is December 24th. We'll get, we're expecting substantial completion. No reason we shouldn't get that. The only thing that's really pending right now, there's some procurement challenges with the lift station technology. So there's some stuff that's probably not going to come until after the first of the year, which will most likely handle that in the punchless phase. So they'll be doing that, we'll get substantially complete and then we'll go ahead and complete that work as part of 2024. And then we do have a sinkhole out there. It's on the, basically, whoops. Did I change that? Oh, okay, here we go. Okay, so here's our stormwater pond. And we're actually doing hand augers out there today to figure out exactly what we've got, the extent of it. We GPR'd it and we're going to come up with a solution, best way to solve, you know, it's most likely going to be injected, capped, and then that will be a dry retention area.
How big is the sinkhole?
Looking at the GPR, it's pretty substantial. It's about 50 by 50, by 40-something feet deep. Obviously, it's not a perfect box, but it's pretty significant. But once it's, we're working with Tierra, is the company that's doing the geotech for us. And basically, we're looking to grout inject it, to stabilize it, and then it would most likely get capped and it stays under the DRI basically. So there is a solution for it.
Thank you.
And we do have budget allocated in the project, in the base bid, to cover that cost. As long as it doesn't, we have $150,000 there to cover that. I think I moved that slide Todd. Let's see if that worked. There we go. Okay, so I've already alluded to this. That's our final lift of asphalt that's going in. Todd did some nice aerial shots out here. This is what the industrial park looks like as of yesterday. So that was super current. You can see we've got, basically, they were paving this cul-de-sac area to the north this morning and then they're going to run this way, most likely tomorrow, and then finish off the entrance. So, and our sinkhole area that we're looking at right now is right in that general area. Next slide. So project costs, base bid is about 5.6 million. We had a substantial amount of cost on the gopher tortoises that was an add, $224,000. We did get a credit. We allowed the contractor to burn the clearing and grub material. So that saved some cost on the hauling. That was a $24,000 credit. There was an extra for a lift station riser, $4,600. And then we had unforeseen, you see these 1,200 tons of boulders. All of this had to go away. This was deep into the cut material. So 1,200 tons was about, the change order we got was about $120,000. We were able to find a contractor that held it away at no cost to the project because they can sell the material. So it worked out. And then we also got a free aircraft removal. They were on site, Todd and I were in a meeting with Walt. And this was on the ramp out there. And we asked and they said, yeah, we'll get rid of it for you, no big deal. So that was taken care of as well. The only thing pending right now is really the sinkhole remediation. And then we've got the lift station, the procurement issues and some equipment that's going to have to get onsite before they can finish that work. Let's see. And then this is kind of the more interesting Jetsons thing that's going on. On the 4th of December, we have a meeting to discuss advanced air mobility. There is a potential tenant that is interested in the site and there's possibility for doing something with the site as related to these new VTOL aircrafts. They could be all-electric, they could be hybrid-electric. There's a lot of solutions out there. Probably would happen with cargo before you'd see passengers just from an FAA certification standpoint. But nothing's set in stone at this point. But we are having a conversation. Senator Brandis will be there. Former Senate President Bill Galvano will be there. Both of them are very interested in the transportation, obviously, for Florida. So we're going to hopefully see what we can figure out on the 4th. So we're excited about that.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Howard, 30 years ago, we built a home. My husband put high-speed wire in the walls, not even sure that we would ever get to see that. Are we looking to things like that when we're laying this out? Because this is a very good point. We might not have this opportunity, but why not get what we can in the foundation to prepare for the future? Have we, has staff had this discussion? Because I think it's very important, better to do it now than say five years from now. Why didn't we lay that cable? Why didn't we lay that infrastructure? So. So, Mr. Howard-
These are all good points to have. I think, talking with this company, see what their needs are, um, are important. Technology is rapidly changing. Actually, this is an area that I actually had an opportunity to work in a little bit, uh, in the past. And worked with a lot of, variety of companies around the United States and internationally. But it's, it's moving so quickly and rapidly, um, it's hard to keep up pace with what they're actually wanting to do. And some things that you assume was from the Jetsons is now actually happening. And you're seeing the private sector accelerate that, and you're seeing that with the FAA and other things. So they're, almost the federal government's not keeping pace with the, with the private sector, which you're seeing. But I think we have a, an amazing opportunity here, uh, because of our location and things like that. But we'll look at that and make sure that we're not, we're, we're capturing all that. But it is rapidly changing with what the needs of the customer could be, but we need to know what that, what that customer needs before we put that in.
Yeah, it will never be cheaper than today-
Absolutely, yeah.
-to lay that conduit-
That's right.
-and get that infrastructure, even if it's just the conduit. But I think that's one of my biggest hurdles, being in government for three years, like, why aren't we looking to the future? And, um, I've seen that happen in front of our plaza. They laid this pipe. And, uh, very expensive to the taxpayers, and then when they widen forty-six, they dug that pipe back up. And so I, I don't want to see us making those kind of mistakes here.
Look at all those, see, there's opportunities for doing some innovative things that put us in a, in a very good lo, location. Where we're at here already, but positively, uh, put us in a good position for companies and things like that.
And I don't want staff to say no to things until they bring it before this board, especially on this project. And I would hope that our commissioners would agree to that, that, that shouldn't be a staff direction. That should be a board direction.
I've not heard anything to date where we've, staff's, uh, held something back.
No, I haven't either. I just wanna make sure.
Make sure that, um, but yeah, we need to look at all those opportunities if they're available. Do a cost-benefit analysis, uh, going forward.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions? Commissioner Baze, Canar? Davis? Okay, thank you. Continue.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do appreciate that this project is moving along. I'm very excited. I know Commissioner Baze is very excited. So thank you for your hard work. Okay, so, next, Todd?
Okay. All right, next, I have Doug Hambrick and Daniel Elsie with ICE. And they're gonna be talking about the financial analysis, um, in, in a planning study.
Good morning, um, Madam Chair Commissioners. I'm Doug Hambrick, Vice President of Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering. We are one of your three general consultants, so we were selected back in twenty-twenty-one. Very pleased to be here today. We're gonna talk briefly. I'm gonna turn it over to Daniel Elsie, who's our Operations Manager, to talk about our, uh, study of just kicking off the financial analysis and business planning study at, uh, Inverness Airport and Crystal River Airport. Daniel?
Good morning. I'm Daniel Elsie, Infrastructure Consulting Engineering.
Welcome.
We're working with Frank and Todd as part of an analysis of both airports and looking at, um, economics and opportunities and existing conditions. So what we're talking about today is the goal of our study. Where we're at in the study, we started back in, uh, September, and upcoming schedule. And also how we're gauging participation and, um, and seeking input from the commission, from the AAB, from the FBOs. So we'll go through that. Okay, so starting off, we wanted to get a sense of how both airports were operating. Overall, one of the goals of the study was to evaluate. I know, I was telling Todd I need a stool to stand on to get up to it. Just wanna make sure I can see over. But looking at the, the current, uh, condition of both airports from a financial standpoint, because a goal, the end goal here, um, is looking at it as an enterprise fund. What that means is, you know, not operating under the county necessarily. Still be responsible for the county, for financial decisions, operating management. But a lot of that decision-making gets relegated to, really, the AAB, becomes a voting board and, and looks at decision-making. And there comes the pros and cons. Mainly, the biggest one is financials, right? If you, if you're an enterprise fund, you have to match grants, you have to buy mowers, you have to pay your people, all costs. So in an effort to get to that decision, whether or not that's a, a good idea, is to look at the current income and expenses. So we've gone through that. Um, we're also looking at existing agreements with the FBOs. I know that both FBOs have recently had their leases, uh, approved for an extension. So we're looking at the terms of it, um, making sure that it's equitable for the county, but also the operators. For the, you know, you wanna develop relationships, and, um, you want it to be equitable on both sides. So we're looking at return on investment for making sure that fuel flowage returns to the county, uh, as an effort to make revenue. And not just from land leases and other operations. Um, we're also looking at the master plan, uh, for Inverness. It was, it was completed in twenty-fifteen. They're usually good for about ten years, and then you start to look at them again. So I know the Inverness Master Plan has a lot of good context in there, um, at least for the needs for runway links, you know, taxiways, from a capacity standpoint. It also looks at the Business Park, um, the future project coming in in Phase Two, and taxiways and, but I do think now that that's built, you can start looking at it a little bit further. I know AID and GAI put together a market analysis of Business Parks. We're taking all that information, kind of going through a discovery process, and making sure that we fully understand thoroughly, um, how the airports currently operate. And then we're looking at growth, growth opportunities, right? Uh, figuring out ways and types of businesses, whether it be local companies or international companies that could come in and build hangars, uh, non-aeronautical, aeronautical type of facilities. And then also making recommendations for what would be the best suit for return on investment. Currently, where, where we've gone through is about fifty percent of the study in the discovery phase. And over six years, the county has made a profit in four of those six years. One of which being, I think, impacted by COVID. I think everybody saw some type of effect. But when you look at it overall, it's about a hundred thousand dollars of retained earnings at the end of the year that you're getting for both airports. So there is profit. There's stuff to make capital improvements, uh, to bring on what we're looking at as potentially, if there were additional staff members that were needed to support an enterprise fund, whether it be operations, maintenance, um, a full look at ensuring that every year, you're gonna get a return on investment, and there's gonna be money to put forward to additional projects. And lastly, look at, as we looked at the FBO leases and all the tenant leases, making sure that the terms, again, are equitable. So you want to encourage business to operate, but you also don't want to be robbed, right? And you need to be able to support the bottom line and develop more projects. So it's coming up with a balance, looking at leases, um, from other airports, uh, in the, in the region, but also, you know, rules and regulations, minimum standards, what it takes to operate. If you want to operate at these airports, you have to follow these rules, plain and simple. So we have acknowledged that some of those could be improved and standardized as the FAA goes through, you know, their lease guidelines, um, operating rules and regulations, things change, so they definitely should be updated. And ultimately, as it says here, you want them to prosper and expand. Uh, so developing terms for both, uh, you know, Crystal River and Inverness. And, and opening up for competition, that, um, I think both of them, if you look at the economic impact studies of both airports, there's been a remarkable improvement at both airports in the last two years, three years from the last study. So I think they're, um, you know, developing partnerships for a long-term opportunity is definitely, um, is where we're trying to head. And so we talked about the enterprise fund. Uh, Todd and I spoke about it the other day. As you look at all this information, it's not, you get done with the study and then figure out the next step is an enterprise fund. It's putting in place, um, you go to the next slide. You know, putting in place the right documents, the rules and the regulations, updated master plans, and have a full, uh, you know, analysis and roadmap of where you want to go. And most importantly, though, is the feedback from the people that, that work here, that live here, that operate here, that, um, put their money and their time into developing business here. And then also get a segment from the FBOs, the people that fly in, um, whether it be based aircraft or itinerant aircraft. And just get an overall sense of what needs to, to change, what is do, what's working well, what's not working well. And so, working with Todd, we're put together a SWOT analysis that we'll provide to everyone and work with you to begin to distribute it. And then take all that information, um, and go through the next, next slide, Todd. So overall, our schedule, again, started in September. We expect around March of twenty-twenty-four to be complete with our recommendations. So a couple of things that are coming from now till then, um, is there will be a strategic business planning workshop. So once we get that information and the feedback assembled, um, we'll brief you guys again and come and give a presentation on what we've seen, what our recommendations are, um, things you're doing well, things that need to be improved. And then ultimately, an implementation plan will be provided. And really, that looks at from a high level. Currently, you have a vision statement, a mission statement, goals and objectives, to expand on that and say, to break it out in a schedule, what is our recommended next step? And then ultimately, that would be the end. But in a nutshell, excuse me, uh, working with Dave Byers with Quadrex Aviation, with our assessment so far, I think you, you all are doing things right. I mean, it's evident. When you look at, you go to, each airport, I think, is unique. Uh, Crystal River, um, you know, I think it attracts a different type of, of operator. Whereas Inverness is with the Business Park, it, it's really, uh, it's exciting, right? The opportunities that could come for both. And so I think our study will showcase that and, um, provide a good roadmap for what, where to go next.
Board, any questions? Commissioner Canar?
And looking at your, uh, your chart here, it shows that, uh, for November, you're gonna have a meeting with the FBOs and the Citrus, uh, Citrus County Aviation Advisory Board meeting. So both of those are, all three of those meetings have already taken place, or they're going to yet? Just making sure that we're on schedule timewise.
I think we are on schedule, so we met with the AAB earlier this month-
Okay.
-and gave a presentation, um, and meeting with the FBOs. What we wanted to do was get the AAB's feedback first.
Okay.
The right way to say it is, the politics that go involved with being a public service member. You want to be able to give honest feedback. And, you know, the meetings, it's, it, you need to do it in a public forum. I understand, you know, sunshine laws and everything, but you also want to know honestly what's right, what's not right.
Sure.
And I, and we want that information from the FBO, because we've, you know, we have already received some feedback from both FBOs, good and bad. And so we want to, to gauge the interest of the AAB. So now that we have this SWOT analysis document, um, working with Todd, I think we're happy with it. It's fairly simple, really. It's a, to identify, you know, your internal strengths and weaknesses, but then also look at opportunities and threats. What's coming, you know, a lot of things are growing around you, but, uh, what could be a threat down the road that could take business away from you? So I do think we're on schedule. Uh, I think we need to, taking that SWOT analysis, spend some time with Andy and James and, and see how they would grow their business, how they would grow their airport. They're out there every day. So I think they're some of the best people to get the information from. But also want to hear it from, from policymakers and, you know, the, the staff.
Commissioner Baze?
See if I know how to work this new thing. This is exciting for me. This is in my district for the Inverness Airport, and I couldn't be more thrilled. I think this is an opportunity for us to change generationaly, um, opportunities to provide high-paying wage jobs and, um, bring a whole new arena of, uh, economy bases to our county. So I'm, I'm thrilled about that. I'm reading between the lines of what you just said, and I hope that you will speak frankly today. And if there's things that we need to do to advance, uh, making sure that we stay on track, because I want this to happen sooner rather than later. I hope that you're getting all of the, the information that you need to be able to present to us at a future date. And if not, you know, please communicate that, um, whether you feel that's appropriate today or if you'd like to do it with Mr. Howard, that it can be discussed back with the commissioners, um, that as well. Is there anything? When you said what you're doing, your SWOT analysis, is there anything that you feel in that today that is going to be, uh, a problem in the future for us? Or is there something in there that you feel like is going to lead us to some real opportunity, um, that we can capitalize on?
Well, there's, there's a lot that goes into it, right? So from the, the opportunity side, I think it's, it's almost limitless. Uh, when you look at air mobility, advanced air mobility, different opportunities for businesses, and I think from the operations that you currently have, um, everything's pushing forward in the right way. The other part, I think the, the biggest task that we've come up against to date is getting all the information, all the financial information, and, and we see that with, with all the studies that we do, because being that it's not its own entity, the airports, it's not an enterprise fund. You know, every time you call the attorney for a question, you may not itemize that to, well, it's a half an hour to the airport. Every time maintenance may go out or public works goes out to fix a light. All those little, you know, if it's a, a material thing, sure. But if it's hours attributed to, to work, how those costs are assembled, it's taken some time, uh, to flesh through it and make sure that it's a complete capture of, you know, did you buy a stamp? Silly things, right? It, it, it all adds up. So what goes into that, though, is where you're getting your current revenues from, your, your tenant base, your FBOs, and, and understanding, looking at those leases. I think on the opposite side of opportunity, things that heavily need to be looked upon are your rules and regulations, the terms in your leases, um, so that it's equitable, equitable. What are they responsible for? What's the county responsible for? Todd and I talked about the Chester, it's a triple net lease, right? You're maintaining your insurance, your own taxes, um, and you're maintaining the building. So looking at what the current, the county currently does, whether they're fixing HVAC, um, or painting a building, you know, pressure washing a building, some things that, eh, if you're getting, you know, yeah, if you, but then when you look at, you know, current rates around the region, um, from Marion County to Sumter County, I think you're pretty competitive, as it stands, at thirty-five cents a square foot. Average is about twenty-five to twenty-seven. So from a revenue standpoint, purely on land leases, um, you're doing fairly well. It's all the ancillary things from, um, you know, cost shares with, with your tenants, um, whether it's your FBO, selling fuel. I, I think you need to look at those to make sure that, you know, some airports charge ten do, ten cents a gallon. That's returned back to the airport. The county here charges five cents. But it's, it's a balance, right? What does the FBO provide so that they get to retain more of that fuel flowage? That's a big, I think, one of the, a major revenue, um, sources is fuel flowage.
Commissioner Baze, you have the floor.
An aviation advisory board, and I assume that many places across the state or other airports have those as well. As you kind of wind this up, is there some recommendations that you can give on how to better utilize an aviation board? I, I kind of feel like sometimes we need, we're not getting them the information and utilizing them to the best of our ability. You obviously put those group of people together to give some feedback to you, to kind of be the first vetting. And I think that would be a, um, a real starting point, that we could get them more engaged into the process and how these opportu, these airports run. And then, and this is maybe getting in the weeds a little bit, but, but if you have somebody that works for your airports, like Todd, do they typically, are, do they spend time at each of your airports? Is that, is that kind of where they're headquartered, office? Or does that vary?
It varies. And to answer the last question first, it's, um, example that popped up, uh, Collier County. You know, they have three airports excluding Naples, but their office is in Naples. So you've got Amokli, you've got, you know, Everglades, you've got Marco Island. And they have airport managers or operations managers that manage kind of the day-in, day-out operations of each of those airports. But the administration and the overall executive management of that is done- But the administration and the overall executive management of that is done from Naples. And so, it changes. If my recommendation, you should be at the airport so you can see and be aware and, but also, I think the greatest thing about aviation is the camaraderie from it. You get to sit out there at the FBO and you get to talk shop and, you know, it's a joy to fly. So, I think being there at the airport allows you to network and understand who your constituents are, what your, what your business is really made of.
Right. Who's coming in, who's, you know, that opportunity to draw more business in.
You know, but then with the two-airport system, do you operate at both? You know, a couple of days here, a couple of days there? I think just developing sometime, whether even it's two days a week, go visit one airport, spend the whole day there and, but be consistent, let those people know that, hey, I'll be there. I think there's a lot of things that you could do to make sure that you're present.
That's part of what I would like to see in your report, things that you're, that you see that are done well and that have some good results. To bring those back as minor as they might seem, I think sometimes we haven't really been in that business, so to bring that back and let us have the opportunity to embark on those would be wonderful.
Well, my outlook on the recommendation is you want transparency, you want the truth, you don't want to sugarcoat, give the political answer. To fix your business, if I had a business that I'm running and somebody knew, hey, if you did this one thing, you'd see results, I would expect somebody to tell me. So, that's our plan is to work with Dave and Todd and get that information assembled, get the feedback put together. And from our professional opinion, these are some concrete steps that you could take to improve and grow.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Excellent points, Commissioner Bays. I agree with all of them. I would like to personally see that we're really looking into the future. So, I'm delighted with your report so far. I can't wait for it to be completed. I don't know if you knew, you know my background, I grew up at Crystal River.
So, you understand about being out there and...
Yep. I towed airplanes and washed airplanes and fueled airplanes and learned a lot of flying stuff. So, I think from a more practical near-term position, I'm delighted to hear that you are looking at hangar leases. I think that my background is now in marketing communications and part of that is customer service. I think that having hangar leases handled by, some by the FBOs and some by the county is not very user-friendly to the actual pilot. They should probably be at the FBOs unless we went to a situation where the airport manager, like you said, is rotating between the two airports. I've also had some of my pilot friends tell me about some of their travails of dealing with the county and, and things that break that they have to spend a lot of money to fix and stuff like that. So, really happy from a near-term perspective of looking at that. I share my colleagues' massive enthusiasm for the Inverness Airpark. I feel like Inverness is definitely on a really good trajectory. We have plenty of elbow room out there to grow out the business side of it. Crystal River is suffering in that area. So, I'm really hoping that you're going to look long-term at, you know, there's a couple of key properties that should be added to the, to the airport footprint to help protect that and allow for more of that business growth. So, I also fully support Commissioner Bays' statement that this, aviation is a game changer. You know, it allows us to attract the kinds of businesses that we want here that will actually help make life easier on the residents because it helps alleviate their tax burden. And it's a game changer for the generationally impoverished, you know, kids, we have 25% childhood poverty here. And having that, that right there allows them to have those career-class jobs and more of an opportunity to excel in life. So, I'm super excited about this, can't wait for the full report. Oh, and one point of clarification, you said 100,000. Was that for both airports?
Yes.
Total, so 50 each?
Yep.
Roughly? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the highest, I think it was 350,000 was the highest retained earnings outcome. That was two years ago. So, it's, you know, if you look at the trend, trend line, it's definitely going up.
Okay. Good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Finnegan? Nothing? Okay. I have some hard questions, and I'm a very polite person, so please don't think I'm being offensive. I too grew up in the airport, Sarasota Bradenton Airport. My father was a senior captain, the 60s and 70s. I didn't get to tow planes, but I did get to sit in the tower. So, a whole different look, but I did, I watched eminent domain of a neighborhood so that Sarasota Bradenton Airport could expand. So, I know that, I'm thankful that I had that opportunity. I don't see that happening to us here in Citrus County, but there are opportunities for that. So, I just want to ask you, we have three consultants here, and I, you're the only one I really don't get why we have, and no disrespect. I, and I'm sure Frank can explain it to us if Mr. Howard sees fit, but are you also competing with our other two consultants? We have AID and GIA. I mean, is there, is it, is it all muddled together what you guys are doing? And do we need three consultants?
That's a great question.
Government spending, that's what I'm getting at, like.
No, they all serve their purpose, and I kind of just share the load with each consultant on doing various jobs. And since being hired on about six months ago, this is what I have to work with. And as projects were already in progress or starting up, this is the pool that I have to use. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
No. What, what, tell me what each one of these are doing for us. It looks like to me, GAI is like the Crystal River area.
Correct.
Sorry. AID consultants are Inverness Airport Park. We dealt with them with the groundbreaking. And then, now we have Mr. Elsie. Is he overseeing those two consultants?
No.
No, he's really just doing a business plan for you, a financial analysis, strategic plan for the airports, which you've never have had. That's really what his role is. He doesn't build things, he doesn't do NEPA, he doesn't do environmental reviews, he's creating this business plan for you. And that was his top high priority, y'all wanted as a board that we really didn't have. We didn't have a, we didn't get a glimpse of what the airports were doing. Even today, we didn't, until today, we revealed that, were you actually making money off the airports? What's your ROI? No one could tell me that. So, part of that was actually doing a deeper dive. So, they, they don't, he's not competing with the other consultants at all. He's creating a business model plan, a strategic plan. That's what he's, his goal is to create that and, you know, give you candid information and things like that and give suggestions, recommendations, you know, have a path going forward, leases, that are the thing they're going to look at, recommendations for leases. The other consultants that were here today had nothing to do with that. This is just bringing all this forward with where are we at with the airports currently, bringing this board fully up to date.
So, do you get any kind of percentage, like, say, we had several projects and you pushed them together to make it go out for bid? Do you get any kind of percentage of that if you're able to direct the county staff to do that?
No. No, ma'am.
We just pay you a flat fee to...
Well, I mean, each project is unique and specific, so, but whether it's a, I mean, we're a full-service consulting, engineering, architecture, planning, environmental firm. So, we were selected in 2021 under the guidelines of the RFQ and along with GAI, AID, we were one of the three selected. So, we are doing other projects from the fuel farm at Crystal River. We're doing a study, we did a SLIP plan for Inverness. We're looking at, you know, designing a hangar, master plan, landscaping, signage. You know, again, we're full service. So, as far as our fees go, we try to follow the fee curve calculation. FDOT uses one. FA is a little more vague on how they assess fees, but usually it's, you know, an hour-based, right, for the type of project. If it's, you know, very technical in nature, it may be more hours. If it's turning dirt, it's probably less hours, right? So, it's dependent on the complexity of the project and what type of professional expertise needs to be brought in.
Thank you.
But it's not a flat percentage.
Okay. And unfortunately, you drew the short straw, so you're the last one. I would be saying that to whoever is the last one standing here. So, another couple, couple other questions I have. You know, obviously, you know, this is the elephant in the room, why so many consultants? Why so many studies? Da-da-da-da. Okay, you've kind of addressed that. But, and you've addressed taking smaller jobs that would just go and we could deal with, and you don't see us bawling jobs together so that it delays time, you have to go for, okay, now we got to go out for bid. It's just, everything seems to take forever. And I'm wondering, sorry, if it's the consultants adding to the madness of, let's get this done? Can you enlighten me on that at all? How that process could be speeded up and not delayed, and you've got so many fingers in the pie?
Yep. A lot of times, economies of scale are helpful, sometimes it's not. If you did an assessment, I think of every airport in the state of Florida, I think the consensus would come back that there's multiple consultants selected for each, whether it's a multi-airport system or individual. Some, of course, select one. A lot of airport, I mean, the CCNA rules say that any project over a certain amount, like the Crystal River runway extension, you have to go out for selection. So, it's not going to fall under the purview of your three consultants.
Yeah, it seemed like it was moving, and then it got stopped. That's why I'm, it seemed, you know, three years ago or whenever, I remember Scott Carnahan saying, let's, let's get this going. We were ready to go, we got, we got some money, we had to do some studies. It's three years later, and now we're going back out for, for bid or, so that's what I'm saying. That's why I think that it's been kind of delayed because of all the experts in the field.
Sure. And Julie, with ESA pointed out, you know, the FA in 2020 changed some rules, FDOT's changing rules, you know, you've got new leadership onboard. You also have a tremendous amount of projects at both airports, which is fantastic compared to other airports that may have the same or similar operations. I think the county is definitely doing it right. And so, Todd coming in, I think he's done a great job. I really do. Coming from his career, stepping in, picking up the ball, running with it, coming from the airport world, I spent 15 years running airports and the public sector, dealing with the commission. It takes time from concept of, hey, we want to build this project to completion, easily five years minimum for something that requires an EEA, right? And then you got the design process and, and you're right, all the coordination and reviews with the FA, funding agencies, you know, the water management districts, it's a lot of bureaucracy that has to have review and input. And, and we try, I think everybody, I don't want to speak for all the consultants, but you know, the way I look at it, and this is what I've told Todd, I think it's good that you have multiple consultants to pick from that also have a deck or a bench of subconsultants because at the end of the day, you really need to engage the best consultant to do the work, right? Not just the next person necessarily in line. If ESA graded environmental, why not handle environmental for every project, right? So, that way you get the economies of scale, you expedite things.
ESA?
ESA, doing the runway extension environmental assessment.
Oh, okay.
Part of GAI's team.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
But it's an example, right? So, they wouldn't be here if you didn't have GAI. They may be, but they, they were selected as part of that team. And so, they, Dr. Carlo and his team, I think, are really, they're great at doing environmental. So, it's being able to pick from that source of expertise, I think, is important.
Okay.
In my history, I've had both. We had three consultants at one time, and one we, we really liked. The other one was, you know, you knew what kind of projects to put them on. And then we went to a single consultant, and that's all we had. But that...
And where, where was that?
I was originally from Lafayette, Louisiana.
Okay.
At a commercial service airport. Also worked in New Orleans and for the DOT in Louisiana.
Very good. Okay. And thank you, Mr. Elsie, I appreciate it. You're, you're a good sport, and I'm sorry you were the last one. I do have a couple for Mr. Howard. I think it would be very beneficial for Todd to have office hours like a professor and know that on Wednesday, I'm going to be at Crystal River. On Thursday, I'm going to be in Inverness. I can't tell you what to do, I just think that's an excellent idea, consistency, and his face is there and he sees day-to-day, hey, why isn't this painted? Why, why aren't we, you know, offering these people flying in different things? We talked, you missed it, but three years ago, we talked about it, you know, I talked about swag bags, things like that. The other thing, I think it, the ROR and the retained, I actually am kind of surprised by that amount. I thought it would be much higher. And I also love the idea of an enterprise fund. And I think that's it. This project is my number-one project when I got elected. I've said that, people don't believe it because I, it was involved in an animal shelter, but I said, who would want to come in and see a dilapidated previous old dump and dumping ground and a dilapidated animal shelter? Let's make this entrance, let's court the people that we want to come in here. So, for this moving forward is very exciting for me. Luckily, Rebecca Bays, Commissioner Bays, has picked that up, and I think she's doing a beautiful job. That's the only compliment she's going to get. But, so it's very, I, I might, I might not have met with any of y'all or no, but I do pay attention. This is very, very important to me. And to watch the speed of government is grueling. So, thank you for what you're doing. Please, hopefully, the three consultants are working together, encouraging each other because that is what's going to make us move forward. Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments on what I've heard here. It's my understanding the three consultants are working on three entirely different things. They involve the airports. But it's always been my understanding that step one in extending the runway at Crystal River was Randy had always told me that the very first step would be getting the environmental assessment. And what we kept, what we kept running into with the FAA was that we had to document 600 turbine operations before they would take that next step of approving the environmental assessment. And we even had a, had a conference, video conference with Senator Rubio about this. And he, he agreed with the odd logic that you had to have 600 unsafe operations before we would study to determine how to make them safe. And, you know, then the idea was, was, was discussed about going straight to the legislature. Thankfully, the legislature has approved it, and now we've got professionals that it sounds like are going to move forward as expeditiously as possible on this environmental assessment part of it. The other consultant naturally is, is the one that really seems to be clicking along out at the Inverness Airport, building an industrial park. Two very different skill sets in those two. And we're going to get a business plan on operating both of our airports out of your organization when this is done. So, for the, for the seven, seven years now that I've been sitting up here, I have, I've not been a fan of hiring consultants. We got away from a bunch of that, but I think in this case, we've got, we've got three very good groups with specialties in the areas where we need them right now. Two, two things that you made a comment about that I'm not sure that I agree with just yet, I'm not opposed to them, whether, whether or not Mr. Howard and his Director of Aviation believe that they need to be onsite out at the airports, I think we leave that to Mr. Howard. That needs to be discussions with them. And, you know, if, if it's believed that it would be more effective being out there onsite for one day or two days or five days, whatever, that needs to be, that needs to be a discussion held by them and no, no pressure from us to make that happen. The enterprise fund, I think, does warrant some, some more discussion. It seems like that would make sense to, to be able to encapsulate all of the expenses, all of the revenue and keep better track of exactly what's happening there. And the, and the upside of it is that, that as those airports produce more revenue within an enterprise fund, that money goes back into the aviation. That wouldn't come out into other county-wide infrastructure projects or stuff like that, that it stays in there to grow the aviation. that it stays in there to grow the aviation industry in the county. So I'm certainly, certainly open to hearing, hearing more about that in the future. Thank you.
Yes, and I would never pressure Mr. Howard on that. It's just the consultant said that in other cases, that has been beneficial. So if that's something to look into, you do have this consultant, he can advise you that having office hours is very beneficial for the airport. And so it's, it's not up to me, but listening to that, I thought that was a very good idea. The only person I'm going to pressure is you, just because you're you and, you know, you're the only male up here, so you get it all. But I think that Commissioner Kennard, you brought up something and I am curious. When, when did you really, like, did you start out of the gate when you were elected with the airports? I know you worked very hard with Captain Davis about, and, and with our legislator, public servants to get that extension. When did you start working on that? What year?
If it wasn't, if it wasn't 2016, it was 2017. There have been, I can't tell you how many discussions on trying to move this forward. Counting operations, counting, going through a, a software program eventually that, that, that listed every single operation in and out of the Crystal River airfield. And then submitting those numbers to the FAA and seeing, saying, look, we're there. And then the FAA responded and said, no, you're not really, those are turbine aircraft, but they don't need a 5,000-foot runway. And then, you know, like I said, eventually, thankfully, we got, ended up with a, a video conference with Senator Rubio. I spoke personally with Senator Scott about it and he, he agreed that it, that it made no sense. And we're all just scratching our heads going, how, how do we get them to see this doesn't make sense that, that our numbers are there? We may not have, you know, 1,000 or 1,200 unsafe flights a year, but we are right there at that 600. And I think there was a year or two there where we actually exceeded that number. But we just couldn't get them to budge on moving forward with this environmental assessment. So I was very thankful to hear when, when we got the legislative appropriation to move forward with it. And it sounds like we're getting, we've got a, a great cooperation and review at the FAA. So I'm, I'm all positive on both of these projects. I'm really, really looking forward to seeing it move forward.
And I appreciate that. And that's one reason why I was a little confused because, you know, there's, there's actually been three boards now involved in this. So I'm like, okay, so what, what are you really doing? But Commissioner Bays.
I just want to chuckle a little bit because Captain Tom Davis, this all started back with the future widening of 19, which is now taking place, which was the displacement of the runway. So this goes all the way back, I mean, prior to even 2010 and getting this runway extension because he would regularly come and sit in this audience about where Frank is with his sunglasses on and want to talk about this airport and the displacement of the runway and getting this extension. So this has been going on a very long time.
Absolutely. And I know that all of us have had, Commissioner Kennard, Commissioner Bays, myself, Commissioner Davis have had discussions with Captain Davis when I got elected. He's like, what are you going to do about the runway? I, I was, you know, making sure that we also think about future build because I understand the Dairy Queen. And maybe perhaps you could enlighten us how that, the approval of Dairy Queen and the roof line and that kind of messed up things. But so this will be such an honor for the Davis family to get this, oh, this runway built and taking off. Pun intended. Commissioner Davis, I'm going to give you the final word for Mr. Elsie to stand there.
Since y'all did the history lesson, I'm going to take us to the Wayback Machine. And it was a former BOCC that we used to have. It was the WPA back in the Great Depression actually cut the runways there. There was actually a diagonal runway that went across the golf course and where Centennial Park, bicentennial park is now. And so the BOCC made a deal with Dad that he would quit opposition to them taking the diagonal runway if he would get the primary 927 up to 5,000 feet. They not only reneged on that deal, a later commission, it was one vote away from closing both airports. It was a, it failed or, or one, whichever. Three voted to keep them and two voted to close it and one was wavering. And so my father was absolutely relentless. He lived for that airport. He was there seven days a week. He wasn't here at the BOCC meetings. And the insanity of the FAA requiring that, and they're not, I do want to do a mild safety message. It's not that they're unsafe operations. They're not economically viable operations because you have to take off with a lot less payload and fuel to be able to use the current runway. So for any of the folks that are listening that are worried that we're going to have larger aircraft landing there, we're not. We're going to have aircraft taking off with their more full functionality. And quite a few charter companies will not come to a runway that's less than 5,000 feet. So this is all very critical. And yes, we do, the Dairy Queen, the brightly colored house, the Armory, those are all properties that should be considered to come into the fold of the airport at some point. I had one other point. It was an important one. Dang it. Oh, your favorite. I want to give a public shout out to, it was the former Senate, Florida Senate President Wilton Simpson. I sent him a white paper that I did because I did do, I, I was like, clearly Commissioner Kennard, he's not a pilot, so he doesn't really know. I'm going to figure this out. And I spent a very long time looking at, I went through all the logs and everything, trying to prove that we had 500 operations. And I couldn't get there. But out of that became, came a white paper, which I got with Senator Simpson and got it done through. But I, that was like the last yard. All due credit goes to my colleagues for pushing this to this point. And I'm really grateful. Sorry for the Wayback Machine, but you brought it up. Absolutely.
Well, thank you. I think you've taken enough licks. Thank you, sir.
Well, I appreciate.
I'd like you to show me the money next time.
That is the goal, right? You can do anything you want. You just gotta find the money. And that's, that's, you, you all are doing a good job at that with your legislative partners. You look at the other airports in the state and not many of them are able to do what you all are accomplishing.
I think also, I think for this study, didn't Duke give us some money for this, Frank? That's another difference with this study. Duke actually gave us some money towards this project as well.
You maybe should have led with that. Poor guy.
I know. That's all right. I wanted to hear the answers. This was good.
You should hear what I told my wife about that. She's like my sounding board about all this.
Good.
Next time we'll bring her up.
That's a wise man.
She loves it. We all love it. We love aviation.
Yeah, yeah, we do. Yes. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open it to the public. If you would like to come forward and speak about the Inverness Airport, Crystal River Airport, aviation, aerospace, please step forward. Get three minutes. You have to fill out a green card. Anybody? I see some people out there. Come on. Anybody affected by airports? Love airports? Okay, I'm going to close. That's the easiest one. Thank you for making my last meeting as chair easy. I'm going to close the open to the public portion. And is there anything, any other comments from the commissioners here? Seeing none. We have an upcoming meeting, a regular meeting is today at 1:00 PM in this room right here in chambers. And at this time, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Thank you, people.